A cold order of the June 22 regular meeting of the Mounds View School Board. Good evening, welcome. It is nice to see everybody's faces tonight. Our first official board meeting, back to a maskless environment. We'll start with item 1.2 adoption of the agenda. I entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Move to item 2.1 Student Recognition and we will welcome Mr. Fink and his crew. Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Mr. Fink from Irondale High School. We have some students representing some activities that occurred this spring. It was awesome this spring. It was almost like we were back to normal. Mask free after the first two weeks, they decided to pull masks, which was great. Fans in the stands, kids. We had record number of kids participating again in the spring. So it was nice to see kids being active and getting outside. And here are some of the kids that represented our different activities this past spring.
Hi, I'm Jeremiah Bernard. I was a tennis captain for Irondale this season. It was a rough one in the new conference. It was our first season there, much better than our old one, so that was difficult. But we got so much better as the season went on. I don't remember our record, but we had a three-game win streak after going winless for so long. So we heated up and then we did pretty decent in individuals, but that's what we could do. So.
Hello, my name is Chikailin. I was one of the bubble guys kinda, so I was in between varsity and JV, you know, switching around. And like Jerry said, it was very rough in the beginning, but later on, everybody started to get back into rhythm and we started playing a lot better.
Hi, my name is Brandon Doe. I did track this season for the first time. I'm a senior. And I gotta say, because I've been going out there for like two years, didn't really try an activity. I just came out, did track and it was really fun. Teammates were really great, encouraging, motivating. Coaches really setting the example for us, just yeah, it made it really fun. I honestly wish I did this way sooner. There's really much regret. I just graduated this year. Yeah, and I did really good at it. I had fun. And yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
We have a few other girls. They're only got lost.
High School Board, Jim Galvin from Mounds View High School. It was a long, tough school year for all of us, as you know, but the last month of the school year was wonderful. We could start having spectators at our theater, in our concerts, and then the end of the school year with prom, graduation. We hosted a senior all-night party at the school this year, was just fantastic. And then some of our teams did a great job in playoffs and it was a strong finish to the school year. Tonight I've got students from, well, from our winter season, dance wanted to come back because they couldn't come. And then we've got speech. Soror is here and we're supposed to have some tennis players. We'll see if they show up tonight, but thank you for having us.
Welcome.
Hi, everyone. I'm, this is Maya, and I'm Madeline, and we are two of the four captains of this past season of dance team. So we're actually from the winter season and we've been doing it for four years and yeah, we really love the sport. This year, of course, it was pretty difficult in the beginning. It was right when like everything was kinda like shutting down. We didn't really know how to handle it. So we started with some virtual practices and those were kinda difficult, but once we came back, we had a really great season and we had a lot of talent on our team this year. And we actually got to state in both our routines and we got section runner-up and yeah, she'll tell you more about state.
Well, the, so the last time, we have two sections, like two, we have a kick dance and a jazz dance. And the last time we'd made it to state in kick was I think like over a decade ago. And this was like our first time making it, so it was kind of a big deal, but yeah.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Good job.
Hi, I'm Jennifer and I'm going to be a senior next year and I'm also a captain for the Mounds View Speech Team for next season.
Hi, I'm Ellie. I'm also going to be one of the captains next year for the speech team.
And hi, I'm Haryni and I'm also going to be a captain next year. So we're in speech and speech is basically like a competitive environment where you're talking in front of a group of people and getting judged on your speaking skills. And that might sound really scary and be like, why would they choose to do that? But like, it's actually really, really helpful for like learning how to write and as well as speak. And it also just like in school, like I, I'm not as scared to speak in front of my classmates because I know like they want me to succeed and I already know things from speech that I can use in school and it's been really helpful. And this season has been pretty difficult and it's very, very different since everything was virtual, but we still had a pretty successful team.
So as someone who also did the season for last season, I guess, where it was normal, it was definitely a totally different experience because normally we usually go to other high schools and compete in classrooms with actual people and a judge. But this year it was totally different where you do it behind a screen and I think it's, I don't really know how to explain it, but I'm honestly just kinda glad that we were able to do a season at all. Because even though it wasn't really as, I guess, interactive and you weren't really able to meet other people and make new friends from other schools, I still thought it was an enriching experience where you could improve yourself with your speech and talking in front of other people like this. And I thought it was interesting and it was good, even though we did it behind a screen.
Hi, so I ended up joining the speech team for the first time this year, which was a little weird, having everything be, you know, not the traditional sense. But it helped me so much. Before I joined speech, I was very socially anxious and I didn't really like to speak my mind very much. And since then, like, I mean, I'm, you know, I'm talking to you guys. So it's, it's just helped me so much and apparently I'm not half bad either because as a novice, I was one of the four state qualifiers this year. So yeah, it's just been an amazing experience for me and I'm so glad that we were able to have our season this year.
That is awesome. Congratulations.
Congratulations for coming.
Hello, I'm Jerani Sari. This is my first time coming to one of these. Okay, I'm standing for Soror on behalf of the Equity Specialist, Ms. Ward, which she is so amazing. I actually came into Soror freshman year, so it's been about three years now. Still at Mounds View. I like it. Soror is basically a place in school giving young girls from all ages, different backgrounds, a sense of community, a sense of friendship, a sense of bond and connection. And we come together on Wednesdays. We talk about our problems because you know, you can't always talk in school. You have to be passive because that's what school is, you know? So yeah, we come, we talk, we associate, like we associate with each other and we talk about our highs and lows. We talk about roses and thorns. Like roses is your good thing. Thorns is like what you fall short in, your setback in life. So that's good. And we take each other as sisters and we build each other up and we motivate not only ourselves, but our friends, our community. And this year we didn't really get to do that because COVID unfortunately. So we didn't get to meet as much. We didn't get to go on tours. So the freshmen, they missed out sadly, but yeah, Soror is really good. And it means sisterhood so that, I don't know if you guys are aware of fraternity, like frat and stuff like that, the sisterhood. And one of our mottos is like the willow tree. Like other branches, you know, it wethers, it goes, it breaks, but a willow tree is, it goes with the wind. So meaning that you never give up, you know? You stay yourself, you stay positive, you stay motivated. And yeah.
Awesome. Thank you for being here.
That's great.
One more group? All right, good evening, welcome.
I'm Emily Ellingson. I'm a junior and I'm a cross-country captain and I got to run track this year.
I'm Sibley Boyam. I'm a senior. I ran track this year and I'm also a cross-country captain.
I'm Elizabeth Van Loon. I'm a cross-country captain and track captain. We're Irondale Track. We had a pretty small team this year for COVID, but we were glad we got to have a season and take our masks off for racing and stuff like that that we weren't sure we would be able to do. And we had three girls get all-conference and one girl, Melana Hayes, went to state and got six in discus.
Seniors want to talk about what you're doing next year?
I'm a senior.
Seniors?
I'm a senior.
What are you doing next year?
I had, because I went to state for hurdling on my first year of hurdles and I got some attention. Augsburg, an Augsburg coach contacted me, talked to my aunts and he's offering me to go run track for them. And that's a D3 school and then I'm really committed into it and that's because of what I did here. The things I've learned from my coaches, and once again, I don't mean to, but I would never forget the lessons and the, all the experiences we've had, our losses and our wins. It was really, it builds character. I've seen, even as a senior, I've seen my freshmen just grow and just, just grow and just get better and it makes them happy and that makes me happy. And yeah, I'm going to go to Augsburg, run track for them and see where that takes me.
Congratulations.
Great, congratulations. Seniors, where are you going to college? Are you going to college?
I'm going to the U of M Twin Cities. I'm going to Notre Dame and I'm going to study international economics.
I'm for sure going to college. I'm not sure yet, but I'm going to go into biochemistry.
We're not really, we're seniors. We thought we were saying what grade we're going into. We were just juniors.
All right. Well, thank you all for being here. We are exceedingly proud of the work that you, in the classroom and, and outside of the classroom. I think tonight was like an incredible representation of, we talk a lot about sports, but all of the activities that exist across our system. So we appreciate you taking some time to, to join us. And then real quick, while I've got Galvin here, I just got my 20-year high school reunion invitation in the mail. So could the minutes reflect that he was at Mounds View as a teacher while I was there?
I don't know if you passed gym class. Are you sure?
It's a tough crowd. No, but we really appreciate you making some time this evening and proud of the work that you've done. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move to item 2.2 Open Forum Public Comments and nobody has signed up this evening. Good item 2.3 Announcements and Sean is going to recognize the gifts.
All right, thank you Jonathan. There were 20 gifts for schools and programs received this period for a total of $8,511.56. In addition to that, there were 21 gifts received for the Ralph Reeder Food Shelf this period for a total of $31,548.53. It's recommended that the board accept these gifts and extend our thanks to the donors.
Great, thank you and thanks to all the donors. Additional announcements, upcoming meetings. We do not meet in July and we will return to work on August 3rd from 4:00 to 6:00 PM for a work session and August 17th at 7:00 PM for a regular meeting. Move to item 2.4 Superintendent's Report and I think we're fired up for the annual QCOM report.
You, you are actually, so thanks for that intro. So tonight will be a little bit longer of a superintendent's report because each spring the state, Minnesota, asks us to provide an update, all districts who are part of the program. And I will do that as part of the superintendent's report this evening. Now, many of you might be aware that Mounds View was one of the first three school districts in the state to implement QCOM. And we can say that to date, it's actually been a very successful program for us. There are five components of that program that we are to highlight each year and so I'll run through those this evening to give you an overview. And the first is Career Advancement Options. So for our teachers, sometimes these are referred to as career ladder positions. And examples would include, and we use a lot of acronyms in Mounds View Public Schools, but our BILT positions, which are Building Instructional Leadership Team Members. So those are career ladder positions, our ISFs, that are Instructional Strategies Facilitators, as well as our CAS positions, Content Area Specialists. All of them are part of the career ladder or Career Advancement Options part of this plan. In total, we have 132 people in those positions, which is roughly about 15% of our teaching staff involved in these leadership opportunities. Now, the work of these teachers is essential to the work we do as part of our PLC-based system. They provide support, they help to improve both the practice of their peers as well as the student achievement. They've made a tremendous district and it's definitely been a very positive part of our culture. A second component to QCOM is the Job-Embedded Professional Development. And the key message here, I think, is that much of the professional development that's associated with the QCOM program actually is focused on in-district opportunities. So professional development opportunities that are done by teachers for teachers. Now, that doesn't mean that no one goes out to a conference, of course that happens, but as part of our QCOM plan, really that's not the primary focus of going outside. It's doing the inside, job embedded professional development. So an example is that it's embedded as part of our teacher development and appraisal process. You might have heard us talk about T-DAP before, another acronym, but that is the system we use. And as part of their PLCs, our teachers actually take the opportunity to learn from one another around high-yield instructional strategies that are being used in their classrooms. Micro-teaching is another technique that our teachers often use. In fact, this year more than ever because things were digitized and we were online using distance learning. So for those not familiar with micro-teaching, at its core, it really is just the digitally recorded lessons where a highly effective instructor is recorded. And then other teachers are able to go back, watch that strategy, they can get together, talk with their peers, ask questions, gather ideas. And then they're able to go back and implement those same strategies in their own classrooms to, to try them out. So it's a way for us to do improvement where teachers can learn from each other, watch each other and improve their own practice. I've been very impressed in how effective that has been and the adoption of this best-practice technique across the system. So I commend our teachers for their commitment to this ongoing professional development. Clearly it's had a significant impact on our students and certainly this year, probably more than ever, because we saw so much of it being recorded over the course of the year. A third component of QCOM is our Teacher Evaluation System. This really is embedded as part of our T-DAP process. Appraisal takes place at two different levels. One at the team level, so complete PLC or teams are evaluated, as well as the individuals who make up those teams. And the benefit that we see as part of that approach is that the work that the teachers are actually being appraised on is directly then connected to the work they're doing in their PLCs and the instruction they're providing in their classrooms. So the PLC is not seen as something separate from the evaluation system, but is really integrally part of what we're doing in terms of evaluation as it relates to the work and the job of our instructors across the district. Fourth component is the Alternative Pay System. So QCOM does include alternative pay in the form of stipends, most specifically for our teacher leaders. So specifically the, the career ladder positions that we talked about earlier, all of them, the BILT members, the ISFs, the CAS positions, all have components of that alternative pay and stipends afforded to them. The broader part of that alternative pay is embedded into our more comprehensive salary schedule. And then the final component that we and Lee discussed is just a general review of how did we do over the course of the year. And this year we had 96% of our staff meet all of the requirements of QCOM and so they earned that alternative compensation as part of the program. For our probationary staff, that was actually 89% of the probationary staff earned that alternative compensation. Now, these are important because the way our system is set up is that we actually create an opportunity for every staff member to earn that, but there's no guarantee. So it's not automatic that you'd get the alternative compensation. If you meet the requirements and everyone has the opportunity, then you get that, but no guarantee is built into the QCOM system and the way it's designed. So I think the percentages really reflect the fact that the district, even at the inception of setting up the QCOM program, really set a really high standard to be able to meet that fully. And so our staff, as they go through that, I think it demonstrates that ongoing commitment to holding a high standard. And again, 100% are able, there's an opportunity, but we don't always have 100% of our staff actually meet that to receive that alternative compensation. So overall, I would just want the board and the public to know, QCOM has been a very successful program, has been for many years in this district. I believe in the way it's been embedded, it works for us here in Mounds View, very complimentary to our overall goals and certainly hope that the state continues to support it and fund it well into the future. So that's it for the QCOM update. I do have a couple other things.
Pause for a second if there are any questions from board members on QCOM?
No, I'm just really happy to see that it's continuing all these years. I remember when, previous years, I think Mounds View was one of the first districts to partake in it and I think it's been very valuable for the staff and the district.
I agree. Thanks Mary Jo.
Two other things then, this evening. Pleased to be able to report that we weren't able to hold our graduations this spring in person. So for those watching at home, we had our ALC ceremony that was held over at Bethel University on June 3rd. And the ceremonies for both Irondale and Mounds View were held at the University of Minnesota on June 8th. All of the events went very well. It was great to have people back in person and celebrating. And we again, want to extend our sincere congratulations to all of our 2021 graduates. In addition, I would let you know that we took a moment to recognize the class of 2020 as well. Remember, we did not have a chance to celebrate with them. There was no opportunity to do an in-person graduation. So our, our high schools actually invited the 2020 graduates back this spring to attend some open houses. They were held on June 10th, so students or grads had the opportunity to come back. And I just want to thank everyone who participated and all those who worked to make that possible, to have those students have that opportunity to come back this year. And then finally, I would remind everyone that our summer programming is now up and running. It actually started on Monday, so June 21st, and it's running through the entire summer. If you remember, we built a far more robust program through the summer this year. The programs range from, you know, academic support through enrichment and activities. So if anybody's watching or is interested, I'd encourage you to jump on the website to see what's available. You certainly can call your local school. They can get you connected and tell you about the activities as well as our Community Education Department has lots of information about what's being offered this summer. With that, I will end my report.
Thanks Chris. Remove it to item 3.0 Approval of the Consent Agenda. I entertain a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? Bring down, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move to item 4.1 Equity Committee Update and we will welcome up Jason Knighton-Johnson and Yolanda McGee. Good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for bearing with us on the front end of the agenda.
That was exciting, actually.
That was, that's good. Good information.
That young Soror lady is also a member of the DEC and I was going to yell at her for not stating that as well, but that's okay. I've known her since, since my Ibu times. So, thank you for having me. I last reported the month before we met for the first time as District Equity Council. It's been a very, very, it was a very boring year for me in the beginning, but a very fun year, the second half, how that I'm, we're actually putting the work in. So as, as stated, the last time I was here, I was tasked with putting together this District Equity Council as well as writing the RFP for our training for, for our school district. The goal was to have both of those done by November, but initially looking at it, there's no way that that could be done, not because it was an impossible task, but because it was very important for us to slow down, to build foundation, build structure, do it right. I, I believe that our, our results are the outcome of what we have for that District Equity Council are that way because we slowed everything down. The, the big pieces was to understand, we were going to bring this group into the center of that cycle of equity, but what, what role would they play? And how would we be able to, to create action based upon their voices? And the best part is, we had no clue until we started to work and so we kind of built it while we were, we were meeting. We have four members of our group are here, here right now, but the big pieces that have come out of the work that we've done, the group put together a, a document focusing on policy when it comes to equity, with the mindset of who do, with that community, who does the community feel that we should be as a district when it comes to equity? And it, it was a lot of fun and put a whole lot of work together to come up with like 15 pages of who we think we should be as a district. And the awesome thing about that is that's going to drive us to revamping where we are when it comes to our equity commitment. The big transition out of that came to, or we realized was that the group wanted, well, what are the action steps that we're going to be taking now to get there? And so over the last half of our half-year, we've been focused on developing an equity framework. And we've kind of went back and forth at how to, to create that and looking at our schoolhouse model, figured it'd be awesome just to evolve the schoolhouse model to not just be something we do here at the board level of the district, but something that focuses on equity throughout our schools. We were modeling it behind a medicine wheel of equity healing that Minneapolis Public Schools put together. And in, that they actually partnered with their indigenous families to create that medicine wheel. Colin and I pieced together based upon our schoolhouse model and my mindset as to how we should build this and then took those pieces and we passed them off to Jill. And our indigenous groups started to look at that to, to help us mold and create so we don't appropriate and just say, hey, we, we, let's steal this and make this, or and put this out there, let's make it our own, so it's more homegrown. But we, as we, transitioning out of that work and combining with the work that we did with looking to select our vendor for our equity, excuse me, our, our training, at our last meeting, our Equity Council listened to a proposal from one of the vendors.
our Equity Council listened to a proposal from one of the vendors. And it was a very great meeting because I got to sit back and let our, our community pick apart every little piece of what the vendors were presenting to us. And in the end, we're very excited about the opportunity that we have that has been brought to us to make Moundsview Public Schools a better place. And so with that, I'm sure there's more to come with that partnership and so forth. So again, the whole purpose behind developing this council was to bring the committee perspective into what it is we do here at the district. And that being said, I think that the best way to actually report out what it is we were doing was bring our community perspective here. So I brought Yolanda McGee here, who's a member of our council as well, to give you her mindset and how it went. And I purposely, she said, what do you want me to talk about? And I said, I don't care. If it's horrible, just tell them it's horrible, just let it be the first time I hear it's horrible. So here she is. Hopefully, that's not what you're going to say, bud.
Let me tell you all the things.
Yeah.
No, thanks for letting me take a few minutes. I appreciate that Jason's always really concerned about what the community thinks, right? Wants to hear what we want, right, out of the programs, out of the policies, and really out of the, out of the school district. So I appreciate it. Again, like Jason said, my name is Yolanda McGee. I've, my family and I have been members of this community since 2003, so for about 18 years. We've got, I've got a son who graduated from Moundsview High School in 2016, who also went to Chippewa. I've got a daughter who's at, went to Turtle Lake, Chippewa, and she's now at Moundsview High School. So very passionate about education and very passionate about what happens in our schools. So I was really excited when Jason, when I got the call from Jason asking to join the Equity Committee. So I joined the Equity Committee when it first rolled out in January of this year. And there were two things that he promised me when he made that phone call. He promised me that he was going to take action, that this committee was going to be all about action, right? It's not just getting on a phone call, it's not just a check mark, it's really about taking action and creating change. Those were the two commitments that he made. I joined, I'll just be very transparent, I joined three different committees because I was really passionate about getting involved in this, in the community. In the wake of everything going on, I felt like there was a lot of division, right, that was happening in our communities, and I felt the need to get more involved, right? If you want to create change, I've always been told, you create it where you live, right, first, and then, and then it creates a ripple effect. So I was really, really pleased when I was asked to be a part of this committee because of my, it aligned with my passions, and I was, I felt like I could bring some, some things to the committee. I will say, out of all the committees that I've joined, this is by far the best one. And it's because it wasn't just lip service, right, that Jason, there's really a lot of action and change that we've been able to already start creating or building out the framework for. So, you know, a few of the things, I think Jason covered some of them, but I wanted to just kind of jot them all down, right? I had to look through all my notes from all of our meetings we've had over the last six months. And, you know, we've crafted the purpose statement, we've created an equity framework, you know, we created a new Moundsview Public Schools equity policy, we've helped create some and craft some communications around diversity and inclusion that went out to the community. You know, we've had meetings to address some of the gaps in staffing, right, diversity within staffing at Moundsview Public Schools. You know, discuss the challenges with recruitment and retention of diverse Moundsview employees. We've worked to address some of the curriculum gaps. I know I was actually part of the, you know, stakeholder group, you know, where we looked at curriculum and instruction and launched the US History from an African-American lens class, right? There is real action, and I feel like real change that's happening within Moundsview to really celebrate diversity within the community. And as a person of color within the community, it's really been phenomenal for me to feel like I have a voice in this community. When I first came into the community, I felt like Shoreview was a really difficult place to join because there's so many people within the community who have been here for generations. And I've shared that with this committee. And I feel like, again, every time I've talked to especially people of color or people from marginalized communities who try to move into this community, it's a really tough community sometimes to break into because you need to, because like I said, there's just this longstanding, you know, relationships. So I feel like, again, it's kind of given, I know a lot of us on the committee, a voice in the community that we probably wouldn't have otherwise had. So I really appreciate those things about it and really that ability to network with other, other members of the community. So it's been great, right? Action, action, action is the most important. A couple of the things that I think we still need to address is just getting even more people engaged. You know, I do think, I hear it from other people of color in the community, right, they want to be more engaged as well. And so I think it's just making sure we continue to spread that, that net wider and make sure that people know about the great work that's being done around equity and inclusiveness. Letting members of the community know that you are welcome here, right, that Moundsview Public Schools is a place for all, right? And we not only will tolerate diversity and we not only will, you know, accept diversity, but we're going to celebrate it, right? And we're going to be, you know, you know, a great place to not only live, but to educate our community. So those would really be the two things. I think there's just a communication gap. We just have to make sure that we're getting back out to the community and sharing some of the great work that's, that's being done and communicate that effectively so that people want to stay. Not only do people want to come to our community, but they want to stay. And we can retain those community members that really make this a great place to live. So. Did I cover everything that you wanted me to cover? You didn't give me anything specific.
You didn't tell them how beautiful my baby was.
Oh, he's got a beautiful baby. That's, that's the highlight of our calls, right?
If you get that to Colin beforehand, he'll get him up on the screen.
Well, don't worry, now that I know. Perfect.
Occasionally on the Zoom calls, we do get babies and kids that come in the background. So that's been really nice.
It has been, and I think the best part of the experience is this is just one of the voices. And if you look at, and unfortunately, Yolanda said, hey, this is the first time we actually met each other in person, but it feels like I know her because we've been spending, we spent six months together on Zoom. But if you look across the Zoom screen, it's truly a diverse group. And it's a diverse group by any labeling you would like to put up, social construct label you want to put out there, it's represented within that, within the group, you know, from, from race to gender identity to socioeconomic status. We're representing both sides of the district at all levels, including our alternative locations and our early childhood locations. And it's been a very, very, very positive experience. And to see those voices that have been frustrated because they've, as they explained to me on those first phone calls, Yolanda's phone call was very, very wonderful compared to a lot that I've made. It's, why should I do this? I've been talking about this for years and no one ever does anything. But to see those voices, see things happening, or, which has happened honestly more, to hear those voices and then help them see that those things are already happening and to see what work we are, we are doing, not that we're anywhere near finished with our work, but that we are taking steps that we realize. And so we're not doing this equity work where the community's looking this way and we're looking that way, we're coming back together. It's been a really awesome experience and so.
Great.
Thank you. I would add one thing, and thank you both. A statement that's resonated with me as we've talked in the committee is that as a public school, there are no external stakeholders. We are the public school. And so this has been a way to bring people together and really provide that opportunity for voice, perspective, and action. And I see that only growing and will get better because of it. So thank you.
Thank you.
And thanks to both of you for making time tonight to present and just generally for the investment of energy and to those who joined us in the committee. I think it's somebody else here, did you mention, or just the two of you?
They're up there.
Oh, they're up here?
Yeah.
Four of us, all right. And please convey that to the rest of the group. We appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're going to move to item 5.1, and it's Throwback Tuesday. Welcome up Carol.
Thank you. Good to see you all.
Nice to see you.
I almost believed that. You missed us.
I do miss some things. But I also enjoy having more time at home. I spent a lot of time in the garden today, so.
Good.
Before I get started though, I just want to introduce Bernice Hubnik. She's also with us here today. She just kind of wanted to observe to see how you have processed through financial board agenda items rather than present, so she's anxious to be working with you and getting her feet under her with regards to all of the financial information. So look forward to seeing her in August when you have some more financial items that will come before you. So with that introduction, I'll jump right into your first agenda item for finance stuff, the budget amendment, agenda 5.1. We just have one amendment for you for the 2021 fiscal year, and that is to reduce the construction expenditures by 12 million. When we adopted a budget, it expended all of our construction funds, not knowing the timing of everything, and so this is really just a timing issue with the construction fund. But I think we're, we're getting on the tail end. I think you had an opportunity to visit all of the buildings, so hopefully everything's looking, looking good. But I do need an approval of the budget amendment. So I welcome any questions or look for your approval.
Any questions?
No. Move approval of 2021 budget amendments as reported.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Move right, item 5.2, 2021, 2022 budget action. So this is it?
This is it, yeah.
The final, the final step.
So you've been working with the budget for probably the last six months, so this is kind of the culmination of a lot of work. You did receive the last half of the document, the other funds in a previous communication. Did not hear any questions back from you, so I'm not going to spend any time going through those funds, just wanted to focus in on the general fund portion of the budget and then answer any questions you have and then look for your approval of this document also. So attached to your packet is the general fund or the entire budget, and if you turn to page two of that document, there's a summary of all of the funds. And so tonight, we're looking for your approval of 202 million in revenues across all funds and 211 million in expenditures. There are some funds that have greater expenditures than revenues, those will then rely on reserves that are in those funds to offset the differences. Good example, that is the Building Construction Fund. You can see not a lot of revenue, but 11 million projected in expenditures, so we do have the reserves that we'll be spending as those expenditures occur. Turning to page three of the document, this is a kind of general comments with regards to the general fund. You can see about halfway down that page, the financial projections that are in this budget represent all of the assumptions that you've worked with over the past six months and any conversations that have been involved throughout that process. It does provide the resources needed to maintain stable class sizes and allow the district to maintain current programming for your pre-K through 12, post-secondary success for all students in the school district. Number two is an important one. It does not incorporate any changes from the 2011 legislative, or the 2021 legislative session. That was a Freudian slip because I went back to see when's the last time the legislature hadn't finished prior to adopting a budget, and it was 2011. So it's been 10 years since they haven't gotten a budget done before you've adopted a budget. But this does not reflect any of that information, so as that information becomes available, that will come forward as budget amendments. Number three is an assumption on the enrollments. We are seeing a slight decline of enrollments, and that is, I believe, mainly because of your COVID pandemic and serving kids in multiple different ways, but that is reflected in this budget assumption. And then the projection of revenues and expenditures leave you with a ending fund balance of 25.7 million, and that is just slightly less than your policy on fund balances. And so I think you're sitting real, real nice there in terms of a fund balance. Moving on then to the assumptions, page four is the revenue assumptions. We're projecting 12,761 weighted pupil units across the whole district, but if you look at that table in the middle there, we're projecting 11,454 students in our primary, primary buildings. So that is very comparable to what you have for the 2021, but then you can see the slight decrease from the 2021, oh, forget, two columns labeled 2021. Current 2021 and then the previous projected for 2021 is what that number represents, so. Number two is the assumption for your gen ed formula, and that there is, again, based off of the previous legislative session of $6,567 per pupil, that's the state's general ed formula. And then the other big category of revenue is the operating referendum, which is based on 1,735 per pupil for operating referendum. So with those assumptions, then revenues are projected to be 160 million for the general Page five starts then the assumptions on expenditures, and the biggest category of expenditures is your K-12 instructional budget. And you can see in item six, there is the projected class size ranges. Again, those have been very stable for many years, and so we're fortunate to have a financial projection that allows to maintain those class sizes to be very stable. The remaining expenditure assumptions are pretty, pretty standard, but those incorporate all of, again, the assumptions that were developed over the past six months. And so with those, it is projecting operating expenditures of 160 million. And then the last paragraph there talks about fund balance, but page seven gives you a little bit more of a numerical picture of the fund balance. So the top section represents the projections for the unreserved general fund, and the bottom section represents the restricted capital portion of the general fund. And so there you can see the projected revenues of 160 million and the projected expenses of 160 million, leaving you about 600,000 surplus, dropping down to a fund balance of 25.7. The fund balance policy says at a minimum of two months worth of expenditures, and so that's about 26.4, so you're very, very close there. And then the capital, 9 million, both in revenues and expenditures, carrying forward that fund balance of about 600, 700,000 to end with, ended balance of about 900,000. Operating capital's looking very stable. The next couple pages are just some very specific details around revenue. In case you're wondering about where all the revenue comes from, you can see those details. Pages 10 and 11 then are the programmatic look at the different expenditure programs. And again, it amazes me that over the years, we've been able to represent this budget with the dollar bill that has remained very consistent, looking at the programmatic programs that support student instruction and student support. Again, 76% of the dollars are focused on those categories, whereas you can see below there, much smaller amounts go towards your sites and buildings, your transportation and your administration and your fixed costs. Again, very fortunate, I think, to see such stability in the organization there. So that is a very high-level look. The one thing that I did want to point out is that in your expenditures, you did have a budget amendment in the 2021 fiscal year for the one-time federal funds, the first phase of Corona funds. And so because those one-time funds are coming in with budget amendments, it's going to be hard to compare year to year because of these one-time funds coming and going. So that will be a challenge, but obviously, those resources are bringing opportunities for supporting our, our students and doing good things for kind of rebounding from the pandemic, so. So the 2021 budget does have federal funds in it, but the 2122, we have not made any budget amendments at this point for the federal funds as we work to define how those resources are going to be used. Again, those will come in as a budget amendment, and you'll see a little bit more details of those when we bring them forward. So the other, other part of the general fund budget is the last four pages, which are some nice summaries of all of the funds by how the expenses are spent, whether salaries and benefits or support services or the revenues, whether they're coming in from property tax levy or state aid, good reference points if you ever need to share budget information with the community. So with that, I welcome any questions you have and look. So with that, I welcome any questions you have and look for your approval of the budget as presented.
Any questions for Carol?
I just have one. I think I've asked it before. The federal funding towards the meals, is that going to provide them again during the summer like it did last year?
Yeah, this will continue summer meals for the summer. And then I believe we are on track to have free meals for students going into next school year.
For all students?
All students.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any other questions? If not, I would introduce a motion to adopt the budget as presented.
So moved.
Second.
It is moved and seconded. Any discussion? I will just share real quickly, and Carol highlighted this on the front end. It felt really quick, and it always does when we get to this point in the budget process. And we're about to pass a 200-plus million-dollar budget to support our schools and our system and to be stewards of our community's resources. But this has been a six-month process. Each chunk of this budget has come before the Board at Work session and in board meetings to get to this point. So just my gratitude to everybody who's been involved across the district to get us to this point and the superintendent so that we can carry on the good work of our system.
Thank you.
With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We've got a budget.
Fabulous.
And then we will move to 5.3, the 2021-2022 enrollment and class sizes. And Carol's going to, I think, for the first time ever, going to tell us that these are the numbers that we're going to see on the first day of school.
Well, I'm hopeful that they'll actually be higher than this. But the attachment that you have shows that currently we're showing 11,486 students for next school year. That is compared to the budget assumptions, we're using 11,454. So right now, we're 32 students above our projections, which is good. As the budget was adopted, you're seeing students support those numbers. We'll continue to see those numbers probably grow over the summer months. We typically hear of all the families that are joining us. We don't typically hear about the families that are leaving us until we see the first day of school. And so we'll continue, I think, to see these numbers grow. And there will be multiple opportunities where this will come back before admin to review. As they stand right now, because we're very close to our projected, the staffing allocations that have been handed out to the principals are very in line with what we were expecting. We'll continue to watch certain hotspots as they continue to change between different schools or different grade levels. But I think it's very promising to see that your enrollment projection, as of this point, is aligned with what you were expecting. So I didn't have any other comments other than your report there. I think we're sitting good.
Questions on enrollment? Great. Well, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Carol. Good to see you.
Yes, thank you. Appreciate your time.
I am going to move to item 6.1, Superintendent's Evaluation. And I'm going to keep the chair, but I'm going to stay right here if that's all right with everybody. That work out?
Sure.
Each year, the school board, in partnership with the superintendent, creates a district operational plan. And then it is our job to evaluate the superintendent against that plan. We like to remind people that as a board, we only employ one person. He likes to remind everybody that we only employ one person. I think we tested the boundaries of that with a lot of community feedback over the course of this year that was unprecedented. And unprecedented is a word that showed up in this review probably 47 times. While at the same time, it is our great privilege and responsibility to work in partnership with you and to provide this feedback tonight. So I'm going to provide a really quick recap of our process and then a few of the highlights of what the board has shared with you. So by June 30th of each year, we are statutorily and by policy required to do this work. So here we are, coming in under the wire with a couple of days left. Each member of the board had the opportunity to review a portfolio of work that reflects an incredible amount of work that we've been tracking over the years. So similar to the budget process, we get to see the progress towards different goals throughout the year. And your department has shared that. We get to spend some time individually with that, aggregate that information. And then the chair and vice chair have an opportunity to sit down with you and answer questions that you may have. We did that last week. And that brings us to this evening, where we get to publicly share a bit of that feedback with the community. So I'm going to try to recap it fairly quickly. Going to take everybody back about 12 months to this time last year. When we were, I'm going to use school terminology, we were in the first quarter of the pandemic. We were just coming off of a really challenging end to a school year. You talked earlier about the difficulties of closing schools and the high school class of 2020 that didn't get an opportunity to walk across a stage. But maybe more importantly than that, and one of the things that was really reflected in the operational plan, was the work that we have to do as a system around equity, around systemic racism, around reflecting the community that we serve. And, you know, the update that we got today on the creation of the Equity Committee and some of the activity is really reflective of that. A year ago, if you remember, we were talking about a global pandemic that was disproportionately and continues to impact our community of color from both a public health and a financial and academic standpoint. The tragic murder of George Floyd that created a level of trauma and opened wounds for students and families in our community. And we heard from them. We heard from them every day. And that was really reflected in the work that we asked you and your team to begin. And I say begin because that's where we are on some of this. We've had a longstanding history with our equity promise, but it's time to look at not just the 2.0 version or the 3.0 version, look beyond that. And I love what Jason Knighton-Johnson said today, that we needed to slow down some of the work. Not because it was impossible to do, but because it was the right thing to do. It was the community-led thing to do. And that tension that Yolanda shared around action and change. So all of these things happening, and that was reflected in the priorities around establishing an equity committee, creating more supports for BIPOC students, enhancing the level of rigor to having a staff that reflects the population that we serve today and, as importantly, the population that we're going to serve tomorrow. So a lot of really good work has gone into that. And on top of that, and that's work that will carry into the next operational plan, reopening our schools, this thing that we've been doing for 50-plus years but had to relearn how to do and had to do it with a lot of fluidity. We're open, and then we're closed, and then we're hybrid, and then we're distanced, and then we're managing through all of the complexities of that. And great admiration amongst the board and I know the community for the work that happened there. And lastly, and I think our final opportunity to just reflect on and celebrate than we did in our last board meeting with Kraus Anderson, the facilities plan and bringing to completion this space that our community invested in, that you and your team led through, the capital construction of, and that we're already seeing the benefits of in those final weeks of school as flexibility was the future and flexibility was key. All of that work has brought us to this point. So just a tremendous amount of work and success and progress towards this plan. And I thought I'd conclude by just sharing a couple of words that I underlined because they showed up dozens of times throughout this report. And you've seen them, and I want the public to see them. Thank you. Grateful. Thank you. Gratitude. Appreciate. Fortunate. Thank you. And I think that about sums up of this board and this community feels about the partnership and your leadership. And that will conclude my report.
Thank you. Always humbly. Thank you to the board. This was unprecedented. It was a year I don't want to revisit. And in our conversation, I will tell you, I appreciated both Jonathan and Diane saying, remember, because it's easy, it's human nature to go back, here's what I would have done different. Here's what could have been better. Here's what we would have done. And yet, we made it, and we got to celebrate making it and how we made it collectively because it was a group effort. So thank you to my team, to everybody involved, to every employee in the district because we're not here today without each and every one of them, of you out there. So thank you for that. Appreciate it.
I'm going to move to item 7.1, School Board Member Reports. End of the fiscal year, and everybody's ready to go enjoy this weather, apparently.
Well, as noted by Chris earlier, the graduations were just wonderful. It was a joyful thing. Gives you just a lot of hopeful optimism for the future. Great kids. The family's so appreciative. And one thing throughout COVID is there's just a lot of things you won't take for granted anymore. And you just could feel the joy in the building. And it was a real special experience for me, and I could tell it with the students and the families. So it was wonderful. Thank you.
Yeah, I'll, you know, build on what Jim said and Chris said earlier. It was just, you feel so good being able to participate in a graduation ceremony. So it was great to see those kids, that they were able to walk across that stage to get their diploma. And it was just, parents were excited. You could just feel the energy in the room, which was nice to see again.
I think items 7.1 and 7.2 were rearranged, so we had all of those uplifting thoughts. Now we're going to talk about the legislative session. Mr. DeMay, would you like to give a bright and shiny update?
Well, as Carol mentioned, this is the first time since 2011 and the shutdown that we have not had a budget put together before the legislative session concluded. May 18th, they adjourned. They came back on Monday. Progress is being made. For the first time, I think, in six months, there's some light at the end of the tunnel. On the education side, I think we are generally going to be pleased where we come out of. I think we could know numbers by the end of the week, probably going to be approved next week. Really, a lot of progress the last two, three days. So hopefully optimistic, which is, or cautiously optimistic, I should say, that we're going to get there. But I think we're going to be pleased. The state has a surplus. And throughout, through the generosity of the taxpayers in the state, I think we will end up with a little more than we thought we would. And, but as always, cautiously optimistic. So that's where we sit.
Great. And Ramsey County League and 916, Mary Jo.
Yes, thank you. At 916, Connie Hayes attended the last board meeting as superintendent. As you know, June 30th, she will be retired. She gave a great report and talked about trying and continuing to strive to have an equity-driven school district at 916 and that Val Rae Bowe, the incoming superintendent, July 1st, who has been with the district for a long time, embraces those ideas and challenges as she did. We passed the budget at 916, $75 million and change. And we did a few other things. It was also the last meeting for Amy Kelly as she was with St. Francis, who was through, her district withdrew from 916. So that was her last meeting. At Ramsey County League, there was a good meeting. The June, every month, as a reminder, there's a free event, the second Friday of the month, for all members. So anybody in the school district is welcome to register and attend. This was interesting. It was Public Safety Officer Panel Discussion. And Tom Patsnick, who is a new Brighton Public Safety Director, as well as Roseville Ramsey County and St. Anthony Police Captain, participated. And it was interesting, if you would like, I won't go cover it, but if you would like, go to the RCLLG website, and you can see the notes. You can even watch the video. The June newsletter talks about the July meeting, which will be Mary Jo Maguire is going to give a presentation. So that might be very interesting. There's also, because of our affiliation with Fusion, they are providing a Transforming Learning Summit. They also do land use conferences. And anything that they put on, they always give a, it's always very reasonable, but they also give a break to RCLLG members. So if you want to go to any of those, and there are some free ones coming up, go to the website and you can check them out.
Thank you.
And I have an update from the Moundsview Schools Education Foundation. We had several members complete their trustees' terms at our last meeting. One of them is Jim DeMay, so thanks for serving on the foundation for so long. We concluded the fiscal year in a strong note with all things considered. And our biggest news is that we are having Rock the Schoolhouse this year. It's going to look a little different, and it's going to be quite a bit earlier. So Saturday, September 11th, it's going to be at the North Oaks Golf Course, which there will be some, it's a smaller venue than we've had in the past. So you have the option to participate in the classic Rock, Rock the Schoolhouse, or you can do the Down Home version, which means you can tune in at home and get one of our kits. Or you can do the Light Rock, which is Friday, October 8th, and it's a luncheon. So there's several different options to participate in Rock the Schoolhouse. But we do anticipate the tickets for the traditional Rock the Schoolhouse on Saturday, September 11th going pretty quickly because of limited space. So just watch for that. I do have flyers for all of the board members to take with you tonight.
Great.
Great. Thanks.
Well, I mentioned earlier, this is our last meeting of our fiscal year. We go into a little bit of a July holiday, so I want to take just the final word. Chris said it already, but a thanks to every single person across our system and every parent that supports the work of this district and has during what I'm going to stop calling a unprecedented year and start calling a remarkable year. Because it was, I, like you, hope we don't have to repeat it, but here we are. Wish everybody a wonderful summer. And then a great thanks to my colleagues on the board because each of you puts in a lot of time and energy to do this work. With that, is there anything else to come before the board?
No. Thank you for your work as well.
She's got the final word.
She did.
We're adjourned.
There you go. Thank you.